Oh, there we go. All right. Welcome, everybody. Roll call, everybody's here except for Denise and she had a death in the family, so please keep her and her family in your prayers and thoughts as they go through this this week. And with that, if you would, stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on, 1.03, we need to approve the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Go ahead, Charles.
Motion by Charles, second by Alina. Does she want to fight over it?
Nope.
So, please vote, of those who can.
Aye.
It's a yea.
Oh, she...
It's a yea.
And it's big.
That's funny.
I'm in.
Okay. Moving on. We're not hard to please. We're not hard to please. Okay. Ms. 2.01, public comments on agenda items. Do we have any? Okay, thank you. We have no information reports tonight. Moving on to consent agenda items, 4.01, 5.01, I guess 4.01. Contracts, agreements, bids and change orders. Ms. Embry?
Good evening. We have for you this evening 10 separate items listed, and as is our practice, you'll have the next two weeks. This is our first read moment, then you'll have two weeks prior to being asked to approve them. I'd like to highlight a couple of items for you. We did have a just-in-time addition that was added. It's the last item, World Strides. It's a Glendale choir trip that's fully funded by participating families. And then also, I would like to highlight for you that the AEDs, the Automated External Defibrillators, they are being represented to modify the cost that needed to be tweaked to add some first response kits to the total. So you previously approved it at $155,369.22, and this brings the total fiscal note up to $162,41.22.
So it's not a duplicate?
It's not a duplicate. It's to modify a previous approved item. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those this evening. Otherwise, you know how to reach me.
Any questions from...
Carol's assured me that Dr. Dawson will be out there to make sure the South of Field is ready by the fall.
Ready by the fall, that's right. Dr. Dawson.
Will be there working in case...
We're bigging.
...the cases on the field.
It's on his calendar, yes.
I just want to know what the phone calls.
Vote. Yes, it looks like we'll have archery equipment, just in case.
Or be painting the streets and playing in the street. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thanks, Carol. Okay. Item 6.01, approval of transportation routes. Where'd you go? You left.
Board policy, 5.01.
Oh, 5.01, sorry. Did I confuse you? Sorry about that. 5.01, board policy revisions.
So, just one recommended update, correction from MSBA regarding how our district is titled, and this is a minor change.
Very short policy.
Very short policy. We did, just so you know, get C update for 2017, which has 15 or 20, so we just received those in the last 24, 48 hours, so we'll get to work on them administratively, and you'll start to see them over the next couple of months. Prepare for more to come your way.
So we will approve that at our regularly scheduled meeting, two weeks. Now, 6.01, transportation routes.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Carol.
That's okay. Just seeing if I was paying attention.
Obviously, I wasn't.
So, this is our routine every fall. Per Missouri law, we are required to have the Board of Education approve the school bus routes over which school buses travel, and that must happen no later than the end of October each year. So this is to help us be compliant in that regard, and the information posted provides for you that we will be using 131 buses to transport approximately 7,900 students, and that additionally 41 of the buses are used to service midday routes. Buses travel approximately 2,000 miles each day for routes, and the route list is provided for you. I will tell you from an overall comparative perspective that the routes are slightly reduced from the routes last year. So a total of 703 routes this year compared to 714 last year. And that's just relative to the student demands and eligibility.
Okay. Any questions for Carol on the transportation routes? Okay. Thank you, Carol. We'll vote on it at the next meeting. We have no unfinished business, so... Didn't that ring? It's got a nice ring. So, moving on to public comments to address non-agenda items. 8.01. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker, and will be timed by the... It'll be on the screen. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. And we have four comments tonight, and so we'll proceed on the first one. We're going to do this. Dr. Benjamin, non-edu rate. Did I get that right?
Good. Right there. Normally, I was a professor of education at the University of Medawar in my early days, so I know it didn't do the education. All my life, I was a teacher. My observation, I was teaching, sharing some of the public schools in America. I learned many things. I took it to India, and I was sharing in India. There are many good things that are going on in this country, which I have a real respect for it. But there are things that has to be improved in this land. Class discipline should be improved. We have to develop the skills of self-control for the children. Self-control should be focused among children. Then the teachers will be highly respected, you know. I strongly believe, all my life, I was a teacher. When the teacher is highly respected, the classroom atmosphere will improve, and the children will learn everything and keep those things in their memory to follow. If they respect the elders, that also helps. In India, they respect the teachers, and they respect the... There are some mistakes in India also, but generally, there is a great respect for teachers and parents. In elderly or respected in Indian education, they are focusing on that. Knowledge is good. We welcome knowledge. Anything new ideas, innovations, we welcome it. But at the same time, moral life is also important. Now, whatever the education if you get, without moral life, it becomes useless. The Bible says, remember thy Creator. So when we have the fear of God in our life, there is always a respect for teachers, a respect for elders, a respect for parents. So the fear of God helps us to give a moral caliber in their life. So, America has a lot of freedom, more freedom in classrooms. In one way, it is right, but they don't know how to use the freedom. We have to educate the children what is wrong, what is right, which way we can use the freedom can be taught in schools, along with knowledge. You know, American universities are the top-ranking universities in the world. Indians are coming to learn the advanced system of education in American universities. With regard to school education, America is lagging behind other nations, which I want to point it out. Because if there is discipline and moral life inside the classroom, the teacher can impart better knowledge for the children. And I request you to focus on that. That's enough for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Second speaker, Alan Kemper.
Yes, good evening. I am very impressed with the way you pronounced my friend. Not many people can do that. As you know, I always want to point back to the founder of our nation, because if we forget our roots, we don't know where we're going. But I'd also like to begin this talk because of the recent tragedies that we have been seeing. It reminds me of a time that I have heard in the history books. In New York City, when the news arrived that President Lincoln had just been shot, it caused such a panic, and it caused such disturbance. People were dying in the streets. There were people already dead in the streets. And James A. Garfield went to the veranda of one of the hotels in New York City, and he called out these simple words, and he said simply, he said, "Fellow citizens, God is still king, and our government still stands in Washington, D.C." So, at a time like... He said, "God reigns, and the government at Washington still lives." He went on to say this, "Now more than ever before, the people are responsible for the character of their Congress. If that body be ignorant, reckless, and corrupted, it is because the people tolerate ignorance, recklessness, and corruption. If it be intelligent, brave, and pure, it is because the people demand these high qualities to represent them in the national legislature." James A. Garfield was a godly man, and he spoke to the times that were so destructive and so horrific, and yet there was a peace and there was a calmness that settled over New York City, which went all over our nation and quelled all the confusion and people committing suicide. I am so disturbed and so broken-hearted, so many people are wanting to give up because of thinking they can't go out and attend a public event anymore. But I just want to say, like James Garfield said, "Fellow citizens, God still reigns. Let's not be ashamed of Him. Let's pronounce His name. Let's glorify Him in every institution, in government, in education, the courthouse, the schoolhouse. They all should be ringing with praises to our greatest friend." As George Washington said these words, "It is impossible to rightly govern the world without God and the Bible. And of all the dispositions and habits which lead to political prosperity, religion and morality are indispensable supports. In vain would that man claim the tribute of patriotism, who should labor to subvert these great pillars of human happiness, these firmest props of the duties of men and citizens." And I'd also like to end by saying that even the philosopher Johann Wolfgang von Goethe said this, "It is the belief in the Bible, the fruit of deep meditation, which has served me as the guide in my moral and literary life. I have founded a capital safely invested and riskfully productive of interest." So are we smarter than him? I'll leave you with that question.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper. Third, Aaron Berman.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to speak to you just for a few minutes very quickly about having creation science in the public schools. And I'm going to go over really quickly six different forms of evolution that are being taught in our public schools here in Springfield, Missouri, and deal with the fact that these are not scientific. The number one first form of evolution that is being taught to our children is what's called cosmic evolution. This is simply another term for the Big Bang, that supposedly nothing exploded, as Dawkins says, some 14.5 billion years ago. And as it exploded, we then have what we call chemical evolution, which is that hydrogen, helium, and one other element morphed or changed into all the other elements in the periodical table. There's over 100 of them. Nobody's ever been able to produce that in a laboratory, in any laboratory on this planet, so it's not scientific. Next, we would have stellar planetary evolution, which is where all of this matter would form into bodies such as planets and stars, and over billions of years, these would supposedly have formed. Nobody's ever seen a star form. In fact, none of us could live long enough to see a star form. People claim there are stars forming in certain nebulas, and they say, well, star's getting brighter. And that actually is not scientifically provable that a star is actually forming. It could also be a body of gas clouds moving out of the way. Nobody's ever seen a star form or planet form, yet we're teaching our kids this. Then we come organic evolution, which is that non-living matter, life would have to evolve, from rocks, chemicals. Nobody's ever been able to produce that in a laboratory. The closest experiment was the Miller-Urey experiment, which was a failure. It did not produce all the amino acids necessary for human life, and it actually proved that you cannot have evolution because you need... He took all the oxygen out of the experiment, nor for the experiment to work. Well, you have to have oxygen, the ozone layer, to prevent harmful radiation coming and destroying whatever's forming on planet Earth. Then you'd have macroevolution, which is supposedly, from this single cell emerges all the other life forms we see on this planet. Nobody's ever seen that. Never has been proven in any laboratory. Never have we seen a single cell produce anything other than what it is. Lastly, we would have a 40 seconds left. We'd have microevolution. So macroevolution would say that, once again, that non-living life turns into life and then evolves into all the other creatures that we see today. Microevolution is actually scientific, and that is that every one of us changes. There are, inside our DNA, the ability to change and make variations. We all wrinkle, we get gray hair. That is science. And the last one, we would say, is science. Yet we're teaching the other five as science when they are taken by faith. They cannot be demonstrated in a laboratory. So I would implore you here today, the Supreme Court has said we can teach creation, and my question is, why aren't we? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Bedding cleanup, Bob Monday.
Yes, sir. You know, I remember growing up in these public schools. Alan was over there with the rich kids department, and I went to Central High School. The Star Spangled Banner was always so very precious, and I've been blessed to probably sing across America a couple thousand times in the last 55 years. I've lived the American dream. Oh, say, can you see but the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the rampart we watched, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof in the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that Star Spangled Banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? On the shore, dimly seen through the mists of the deep, where the foal's haughty host in dread silence reposes? What is that which the breeze or the towering steep, as it fitfully blows, half conceals, half discloses? Now it catches a gleam of the morning's first beam, and full glory reflected now shines in the stream? 'Tis the Star Spangled Banner. Oh, long may it wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? And where is that band whose so vauntingly swore that the havoc of war and the battle's confusion? A home and a country should leave us no more. Their blood has washed out their foul footsteps' pollution. No refuge could save the harling and the slave from the terror of flight or the gloom of the grave? And the Star Spangled Banner in triumph doth wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? And I love this because it talks about our Creator on this last verse. Oh, thus be it ever, when free men shall stand between their love homes and the war's desolation. Blessed with victory and peace, may the heaven-rescued land praise the power that hath made and preserved us a nation. Then conquer we must, when our cause it is just, and this be our motto; and God is our trust; and the Star Spangled Banner in triumph shall wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? You know, we've got such a rare possibilities of placing that American dream that I've lived. I don't have a lot of material things, because I help homeless vets and a few other things like that, but I'm very fulfilled to have worked with a couple hundred legends and five different styles of music, and then yet to share my Savior's love. That's what this whole Star Spangled Banner is about. It was founded on the principles of Christ. Documented with William Federer's book, America's God and Country. I doubt any of you have got that book. Sirs, ladies, I implore you to get William Federer's America's God and Country, some $5,000. May God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Moving on to 9.01, strategic discussion. Dr. Lawson. Dawson. Did I say Lawson? Call him whatever you want. Mr. Lawson. Dr. Dawson.
Thank you for this opportunity to tonight bring you Focus Area 1. Go through Strategies 11 and 12 of report to you. This is our year-end report, so all of the activity for '16 and '17 academic year. I've kind of coined these two as the experience and partnership strategies that we use. Starting with our experience, this is going to be really about Explore, which you just had a full report from that team last month. You'll see that we had 812 student experiences. Members of our students are not taking field trips any longer. They're ingrained, embedded into the curriculum, and they're going back for deeper dives into the curriculum and those places that we partner with. Now, that 812 is impressive, but when you think about last year, it was 600, and we've added 200 more trips. There's a lot of logistics involved in that, so we would thank that team. We also, one of the metrics here is about partners, and we've moved from partners from just over 20 to 64 this past summer, and so that's a huge benefit to us, especially as we start thinking about what we're doing in redesigning secondary education, because we'll need those partners at the table. And I just want to remind you, I believe you've gotten a luncheon partner, SPS Explore luncheon invitation for the 16th downtown at noon, so we hope you can join us for that also. Just to kind of give you some of the highlights, and I know Dana went through this a little bit with you last time, we did see an increase in the number of enrollment and attendance, which was a new metric for this team last year, in Explore. We had awesome experiences with Camp O'Connor, if you remember last fall, and the watershed experience with our middle school students this last spring. And as we already are ramped up into the '17, '18 year, those things are already in full swing, affecting hundreds of students who would not have those experiences in the past. We always talk about kind of our GoCaps experience, which is our Center for Advanced Studies that we partner with, I believe, 15 other school districts at this point, creating experiences in the workforce with juniors and seniors. We have 190 in the region having that participation in multiple strands. One of the highlights is we did add Branson this last year as an affiliate strand. They have a health care down at Cox in Branson area. Also highlight that we did start with the choice and transfer, because that's really about experiences also. It's GoCaps experiences. It's also about some of our choice experiences in-house around magnet schools, or perhaps embedded experiences like IB or Quest. And how are we looking at those particular programs? How are we marketing those programs? How are we enrolling students in those programs? And we did establish work teams that we'll be working this year to help solve some of those problems. One of the things I think about in the next steps that I'm really excited, not only we have to continue with Explore '18, if we continue to hit that metric of 50% of our student body involved, and you think about all the logistics and the hiring and the food service, we still have to continue to fine-tune those processes. I would tell you, the one on here that I'm most excited about in the next steps is our first full-scale experience. It's going to be at the eighth grade level, and it's going to be a university experience. So we're going to have students tour local institutions of higher ed, from OTC to Evangel and Missouri State and Drury, and saying, this is having kids go through the whole process of learning about majors, and learning about financial aid, and learning about scholarship opportunity. And then I've asked the team to design in kind of a culminating event that is multiple parent nights with our eighth graders, and helping them design the five-year plan. So it would not only be the four years of their high school experience, but starting to think about that fifth post-secondary experience. Is it military? Is it a community college? Is it a four-year experience? So trying to get that right now, we do that as high school counselors, embedding into the eighth grade English and Language Arts class. And you're talking about a half-credit here and a full-credit here, or three credits for this, and it's a little bit overwhelming, I believe, for an eighth-grade student. So we're trying to hopefully redesign this from the ground up, giving kids embedded experiences for them to help make wise choices with their parents in the spring. So that will be something to take a look at as we continue to explore, and this will be our first full-scale project.
I have a question on the... We received 636 magnet applicants. What do we know about those that 486 that were not selected? Where they came from? Were there relative weaknesses? I mean, did they make them graphically?
I don't know if I know the data between all of the applicants. I can say that what we try to do is balance the number of boys and girls, and we try to hit a metric around representing free and reduced lunch in that category, too. That's been a new add over the past few years, and we're really close to system average there. But I don't know about the other 400, so... Good question. This is the metrics around Explore and those experiences. Just kind of giving you the Explore side, I know you've seen this, but they've kind of got this red light, green light, yellow light kind of a metric to show you where they're at in their metrics. So you have participation rate. Our goal is to get 50% of the student body, and they're just under that. I'm going to go ahead and do student, teacher, and parent satisfaction with Explore and how it went, and now their benchmark is to hit 80% of satisfaction, and they're exceeding that. We try to make sure we're hitting about the system average for free and reduced lunch rates, so that you'll see as a green in the meal status. Experiences, this is going to be about parent and student experiences on those last two, about their experiences in Explore. So how was the zoo? How was going to our partners out in the field during Explore? And then experiences in general were just partners. How many of those were, I'm sorry, the bottom, partners satisfaction? And we'll get to hear more about that at the luncheon, too. Now, on the other side, experiences with Camp O'Connor and some of our GoCaps. Last year, we did not have anything in this category for you. We built this all out this year, so you can see our pilot has gone well, and we're still continuing to work through some of these logistics of scaling these processes out. It's when you start thinking about, we had a great experience in Camp O'Connor, but can we do that for every fourth grader in the system? Logistically, that becomes very hard, especially when you're limited by some weather and the time of the year. So now we're, I think, eighth grade is going to be our first full attempt to that, so really excited about what this team has accomplished. The second strategy...
Just to make sure, this particular goal deals primarily with just experience, not achievement strictly.
So it's Explore and Explore experiences and Explore partnerships. And then there's the SPS experiences that we're doing with Camp O'Connor, the watershed, GoCaps. I'm not sure if we survey our magnet students in this, but it would be on that side of it.
But the achievement side, that's under a different focus, different goal.
Yep, that's right.
I just want to make sure it just wasn't in here.
That's right. Good question. Strategy 12 is really about partnerships, and you'll see the strategy is really about national, regional, and local partnerships, and what we try to achieve and how we connect. One of the first things you'll see is our 700 people who, teachers who attended, educators who attended the Innovation Summit the last summer. That's really a regional partnership with our GoCSD. We now have 49 districts linking arms to help provide professional learning, representing just over 100,000 students. So really, in 18 months, that went from about 18 school districts to 49, and really taking a big chunk in the region's sharing resources. At the national level, we really are at two groups. We're Education Leader 21, and we have a group there right now, actually, and they're talking about portrait of a graduate, profile of a learner, and how to see if we can, how do you measure four Cs with a think-taker folks there. The regional level, we would say it's GoCaps, GoCSD, launch... The regional level, we would say it's Go Caps, Go CSD, Launch, Visit SPS. So things I'm super excited about in what we've been able to accomplish, and you'll see our continued connection with Ed 21 and the League of Innovation that Dr. Jungman serves on, you will also see Go Caps, which is a regional piece to connect our students to the workforce, which was started by Springfield Public Schools and Dr. Jungman's vision, linking arms with others. And then you'll also see Go CSD, which is our professional development side, linking arms with teachers all across the region. What I love about Go CSD is it's really about, we call it Spotlight Sessions, so it's workshops sponsored all over by our own talent. So it's not always bringing people in, but it might be, hey, we have a great guided reading teacher over in Branson, and she's going to host a Go CSD workshop. Or we're going to host Canvas users at Springfield Public Schools, because we are the Canvas user for the region. And we're starting to really connect each other and share resources and maximize our impact on kids all throughout. So I love that, goes back to the book, even a couple of years ago, this isn't about my kids, this is about our kids. And our kids really is being redefined by the Southwest region, and I can't imagine anybody doing it better than us right now.
Mike, who coordinates the Go CSD?
We have an executive director, Dr. Dennis Cooper. He's a former commissioner for DESI, Assistant Commissioner of DESI. We also have a professional learning coordinator, Cindy Bryant, who is a retired educator and was also the math coordinator at DESI. She now leads that. And then we have a few contracted people, too, who help us with Canvas and help us with other pieces.
So they're our district employees?
Not our district employees. They are Go CSD, so we have a membership, we pay into it.
So it's its own entity?
Yep, their own entity. Now, we happen to have seats on the board, and we have our tentacles into it pretty good to help drive some of that work, but it's definitely its own independent group. Definitely, it was initiated, I would say, through Springfield, but it's been handed over.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll tell you about Launch. That was a huge success for us this last year, thanks to you. We now have 28 districts linking arms for Launch, representing over 75,000 students. We have filled over 200 of our seats for this fall. We are starting to already plan for what it's going to look like in the spring, but as you recall, that's providing high-quality course access to our regional partners. And what I love about what we're doing in this field is that there's a lot of companies in this space right now, and it's for-profit. Not high-quality, but for-profit in providing access, and a lot of small districts are saying, well, I got to have AP, and I've got to have advanced chemistry, and I've got to have Spanish, because I don't have a foreign language teacher. We're able to now be that provider for the region, and we're able to do it cost-neutral. And I love that we're not for-profit, but we are for-purpose. So we kind of thank our Launch team for that. SPS, Visit SPS was another kind of accomplishment out of partnerships, I think, that came out here. We're doing so many things. When you think about Encore, and you think about Launch, and you think about Explore, we now are having visitors come here on a regular basis, and Dr. Hackenworth and his team had to create a process for how to get visitors in here, how we share, how we go visit schools and classrooms and what they want to see, because it was starting to overwhelm the system. So we've been more strategic about when and how we tour our visitors. Next steps for partnerships is really around building out Launch strategically, starting to build it out a little wider, and know that the team has a meeting with DESI at the end of the month, just to kind of share what we're doing and then see how we can all link arms together for public education, providing high-quality access. I think we have to engage more students in Go Caps. We are not bringing enough students into that, and I don't know what the barrier is right now, because I feel like the chamber and the district are linking arms, and we're doing lots of panels, student panels. We're giving lots of marketing, but we have to rethink something, because we're not getting enough students to the table there. And then in addition, I think we have to get more teachers to the summer externships. Heard that over and over again in Nashville about externships, for teachers to learn the craft in the local business so they can use and teach those skills in the classroom. So that'll be a huge part. Then the other part is we're talking about expanding opportunities. I think it actually came from this table. We talk about Imagine Grants, so we've done classroom grants, we've done high-impact grants, and the question was, how can we get some teachers out visiting the greater field of education to learn and bring that back? So we're trying to figure that out, and trying to figure if it's conferences or maybe a local partnerships here, so I know Ben's team is still working through that. You know, then you got to think, all of this national, regional, and local, we've had a banner year. We've had a banner year for, we had Superintendent of the Year. We have the National Distinguished Principal of the Year. We have the Early Childhood Program of the Year, the Counseling Advocate of the Year, State Teacher of the Year finalist. We had MoCase Distinguished Service Award. We had the Paul Morris Community Service Award. We've had a banner year, and you can't say that we didn't go out for those things, but all of this work kind of connecting us to each other locally and in the region and in the country has helped elevate our work and has provided some accolades along the way. So we thank you for your support in all of what we're doing to close the gap for students. I did, I did kind of did a last few slides that were just kind of overall in the focus area, so just to take you back, we've done Goal 1, Goal 2, and now Goal 3. Want to just give you some of the quick highlights for what we're going to be doing in the coming year. And Goal 1, which I saw was safety, health, hunger, hygiene, mental health, I would say it's really about partnering with our faith-based groups to link arms, to see how we can start to collaborate in a more succinct way. I know that last month you honored a number of faith-based partners who all said shoes is what we're going to do for this community, and we provided, you've seen Twitter, there's an awesome picture of kids in their Converse going about, because we linked arms with a number of partners. So I'm really excited about that. The other one is just expanding services and opportunities to decrease food insecurity, mental health, resources, whatever we can do in that realm. Goal 2 is really about equity and access, and for me, number one thing that I constantly talk about with leaders is where we have middle school, where we have middle school engagement, we've changed to Misha, we've changed the seasons. Where's our participation rates? So there's a sense of urgency, not only around Misha, but also our after-school student interest clubs, so that I'll be asking them over and over again. I think, too, equity and access, and the last bullet there is about taking our feedback out of Panorama. We have leadership data, we have feedback from Explore now coming out, and it's taking those questions and those metrics and tying them directly to the strategy. And that's going to be some really great work. So we're going to see all this Explore data coming through one tool in Panorama. We plan to bring that tool kind of update to you around feedback in the coming weeks. So that's going to be really exciting. And then Goal 3, I just kind of mentioned to you, but the one I'm most looking forward to is not only the eighth grade full-scale experience around universities, giving that kids, you got to be it, you got to be in it to see it, division it to be it. I'm also thinking about Launch and how we're going to expand that and also Go Caps. Then lastly, I just kind of did a focus area, so what do we need to do better as a focus area? So I've created some timelines and some, for this group, new management strategy, meeting more periodically with these teams to hold them accountable for their metrics, and we're also, and you'll see, the second one is really evaluating all the metrics right now. We're into this strategic plan a few years, and it's time to review. It's time to link up with analytics, as Amy St. John's office, and make this more seamless in our approach, so I look forward to that work in the future. And then just disaggregating Panorama data. So that kind of gives you the year-end reports for Focus Area 1. Last few months, we've done Goal 1, 2, and 3, and I appreciate your support as we continue to move the needle for our kids. Any questions that I made?
Questions for Mike?
We have a lot to celebrate.
We have a lot to celebrate. Also accompanying in your board docket tonight is not only the presentation, but the community report that has a little bit more detail about all the experiences and partnerships, so I encourage you to take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, moving on, Superintendent's Report.
Just a few updates, and Dr. Dawson hit on a couple of those things, but Club Encore continues to go great guns at this point. We actually passed the number of hours that we had all of last year last week.
Not ugly.
So second, fifth grade tutoring underway, and we really appreciate the staff, all of our teachers, making that happen. So we can't wait to see the impact, so thanks to the team and all the teachers that are making that happen. Couple other highlights I would just note, you know, part of the budget last year was Academy process and investigation. With that, you know that you approved that last month, and we had our consultants on-site, actually, this week, already starting conversations with teachers and area community leaders to talk about what that can look like. We also had a team as part of a visit last week, and I think Jill and Tim, as well as Denise, were on that team, and you'll be learning more from that process as it goes forward, and we'll also be taking additional team members in the spring. So they're just getting underway, so that's going on in the district. Appy Hour, our first Appy Hour of the year happened yesterday, so teachers, again, volunteering to teach each other and learn together after school. Yesterday at Glendale, awesome opportunity. Couple other celebrations, the Hillcrest softball field opened, Denise was there to throw out the first pitch for there, and then Parkview's softball field opened, and Bruce was there to throw out the first pitch. Both great feedback from the parents, the kids, the coaches, really appreciate what has been provided in those environments, so really, really cool nights for those.
Didn't hurt your arm, did you? Didn't hurt your arm when throwing it out, did you?
No, I was just worried about getting it.
To the plate. You didn't want me shown up by Denise.
Yeah, you're doing that.
They made it, they made us go all the way to the mound. I mean, it's like, it should just be a...
Good job.
Because the lady who was the first softball coach over there who pitched for MSU and still hit all these...
He'll sing it.
...was 60 miles, just trying, you know, the rest of us were going, trying together, but it was, yeah, they had scored their softball.
That's good, thank you.
So it really was a new pain with the current...
Yep. Exactly. Good to see those two coming together, and will be great assets for those programs for years and years to come, so. Couple other, as I close up, closing day for the RFI for Pepperdine and Doling, don't forget, is October 16 at 3:00 p.m., so people that have interest need to make sure that they get their document or proposal to Sperry Van Ness Rankin, and then we'll begin the review process. And don't forget, October 30, we have retreat, so hopefully you've got that on your calendar. We're looking at location. We won't do it in this room, we'll do it on an offsite likely at a school, but we'll release that very soon, so we're looking forward to that, a learning opportunity, and we've just wrapped up our first parent advisory and teacher open forum, which is a great opportunity. We even used those audiences to get a little feedback on the data that we had shared with you regarding bond feedback at the previous meeting, so be sharing some of their thoughts as part of retreat also. So I think that's it for me.
Good. Legislative update, any?
No, it is the season to be fairly quiet, right, at this point, at the state level, so I know really legislative update, we'll have more information as we come up to retreat. MSBA is finishing their platform this week.
They built it on Friday.
Yeah, this week, so we'll have that. We'll also know that bills will be beginning to be filed soon, so it will heat up, I mean, that happens in the next couple of months, so it will begin to heat up relatively quickly. We have scheduled or preliminarily put on for our December board meeting night, our reception for local legislators, who we'll invite them and go over our platform, and I'll be doing the same thing I typically do, which is reaching out to them and trying to host the medical prior to that, in November and December.
Board comments. Any comments, any thoughts? Upcoming meetings. Do you have MSBA annual conference this weekend? We have four presentations, four programs, so we are well represented at the conference. One thing I would like to do, and then we've done this every year, just about after everybody comes back, because I know it's a lot of time you guys are spending to go up there, resources that we spend to send us up there, of coming back after the thing with two or three ideas or thoughts, because I'd love to be able to come back with two or three thoughts for each of us, and then we end up with a couple of them that we can actually do or implement. I'm not talking about earth-shattering things, but, I mean, we're spending time and resources up there, there's no reason we can't come away with something.
Absolutely.
Something productive, something that we could do, little, big, whatever. So think about that as you're attending sessions, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and doing that, so it's going to be a good conference, and so look forward to that. So the only other one, Hall of Fame, October 19, put that on your calendar, that's a great time, great inductees this year, so put that on your calendar. Mike mentioned the Explore Partnership Luncheon, so October 16. Anything else we're missing? Meetings upcoming? Can't think of anything. Okay. Plus deltas, any thoughts or ideas about the board meeting? Please jot them down in your little pink slips and put them up on the board. We do need to vote to go into exec session, so I would entertain a motion at the board meeting, executive session, to discuss real estate and personnel matters, as provided in Section 610.021, Sections 2, 3, and 13, RISMO.
Senate.
Motion by Alina, second by Charles, and if you would vote.
It was a close vote.
Close vote. We return to exec session.